Chairwoman, could I, if please, call us to order?
Absolutely. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and the Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and post on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before the Board. Fire exits are located on east and west sides of council chambers as well as the back of the building. I will ask everyone with a cellphone or other device to kindly silence your device for the duration of this meeting. This meeting is being recorded by AP-TV for your viewing pleasure in the future. Please join me with a pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
I will now take roles. Mary John Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Here.
James Banano.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Alexis Taylor is absent. Eric Galco.
Yes.
Daniel Scannamayo is absent. Juanita Barnes is absent. Rick Lambert.
Here.
And Barbara Kretzke.
Here.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, the first item on the agenda that we have are minutes from March 21st of 2022, which is a regular virtual meeting. I know that I had a request to make a modification to the minutes.
Yes.
I don't know if anybody else had anything else?
Jennifer Souter had some changes on page two, which I've gone ahead and made already.
Okay.
I have a couple of comments to make on it.
Yes, Mr. Henry.
In reviewing the minutes, I think there's a couple of omissions. I noticed that when, during the questioning of the witnesses and during the comment period, there were no remarks attributed to Don Garland, but he did, he was listed in the minutes as having spoken. There's just nothing there, so.
Correct.
If that can be added, then I would move that we defer these minutes to the next meeting.
I appreciate your comments, but the minutes are not supposed to be verbatim. We have AP-TV recordings for that purpose. The minutes are actually just supposed to be a broad overview of the meeting and what motions were made and what votes were taken and who was on the agenda and so forth.
It was noted that he spoke, but there was nothing after his name. That's all.
I think that that's actually with the public comments. I think a lot of times that's the way that we have left it.
Yes, we don't take notes on everything that the public says. And I usually try to, you know, take as much notes as I can on what the Board members' comments are and what suggestions they have and what conditions there are, but nothing more than that.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Rick Lambert and a second by Yvonne Clayton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Henry. Mr. Henry abstains. Any other opposed? All right, your few minutes memorialized for March 21st, 2022.
Okay, next item on the agenda is our only application for this evening. Kay Hobnian Holdings. Please come on up. Hello.
If I may, Andrew Karras from the firm Fox Rothschild, and we have the applicant, Kay Hobnian Holdings, NJ LLC. Before we get started, I just want to go through a little bit about what the application is about, but I think you first have to, in Jersey.
Yep. So I have looked at the notice, I have looked at the proof of the application in the paper as well as notice to the surrounding community and others, and the Board does have jurisdiction to hear it based upon Mr. Karras's notes.
Good.
As indicated, I represent Kay Hobnian Holdings, NJ LLC, with regard to its property at, it's actually a number of lots, it's block 4003, lots 1, 2, and 16, which is on the corner of Burr and Third. Proximal area of that lot is 14,731 feet. The other property is adjacent to that. It is lots 12 and 13, also block 4003 on Burr and Second Avenue. The area is 19,907 square feet combined. We're talking about an area that is 34,638 square feet. Existing on the property is vacant lots. What is being proposed is the development of two condominium buildings. As I'm sure the Board is aware of these, lots that we're talking about are in the waterfront redevelopment area, the prime renewal district. What we are seeking to do is, number one, subdivide the larger lot so as to make the smaller lot that is just under 15,000 square feet, 15,000 square feet. The reason that we have to do that is under the waterfront redevelopment plan, as a subsequent redeстрой, you are allowed to develop lots as long as they have a minimum of 15,000 square feet. In addition to the subdivision that is being proposed, as I indicated, there are two buildings that are being sought to be developed, both condominium buildings on the Burr and Second Street. We're going to have what is called the Aegean, a three-story condominium building having 27 condominium units. The other lot, which will be 15,000 square feet on Burr and Third, again, a three-story condominium building, that building having 17 units. We have a number of witnesses that we will be calling who supported the application tonight, Robert Curley, our engineer, Frank Merdini, our architect, Brian Leff, the landscape architect, Michael Flippen, who will discuss management and operations with regard to the proposed condominiums, and lastly, David Roberts, our planner. That being said, if there are no questions, I will commence with my witnesses. Up.
I'll be running this here way beyond my call.
Can I have you raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, and if you could state your name and spell your name for the record?
Robert Curley, C-U-R-L-E-Y.
And Mr. Curley, what are you going to be testifying about?
I'm a licensed professional engineer and professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm only going to be testifying in regards to engineering tonight.
Curley, can you please give the Board the benefit of your qualifications?
Yes, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I received my education from, we were College of Engineering, or NJIT, and practicing engineering for over 30 years. Planning Board engineer for Kirktown for seven years, alternate planning Board engineer for Brielle for multiple years, and alternate planning Board engineer for Island Heights appeared before this Board many times.
I'm familiar with Mr. Curley.
Thank you. Mr. Curley, you're familiar with the project, which I've just outlined before, am I correct?
Yes.
I'd like you to do is take us through the site that we're dealing with and then go into the engineering and the plans area for this development.
I could just make one slight correction. You had indicated that these properties are vacant. There's one existing dwelling that is located on the southern portion of the site.
Thank you.
So the project site is located between Second and Third Avenue, with frontage on both streets, and also frontage on Burr Street. And it's highlighted in the center of the key map that's shown for the minor subdivision.
And what we're looking for is what's, let me get that back then, as the preliminary, final, and finally, the site plan, am I correct?
That's correct. And as you pointed out, part of our application, we also need to have a minor subdivision to supplement the lot area of the northern lot so that we meet the minimum requirement of 15,000 square feet.
What I'm going to do is we're going to mark what is up there as A1 identification. If you could, if you could just tell us the last revision given those comments.
Can we just have the title block enlarged so we could see what's on the screen to confirm? It's top right.
Right above my six.
Top right, yeah.
February 1st, 2022, am I correct? No, it's, uh, these aren't from, I guess, February 1st, 2022.
Okay, that's A1 for identification.
So, again, as I indicated, part of what we need to do is create a subdivision to basically donate a small amount of property to the lot B, which would be for the Baltic, and lot A, which is the Aegean. So when we're done with the subdivision, proposed lot A will have 19,637 square feet, and proposed lot B will have 15,000 square feet.
If you don't mind, can you mention which lots we're talking about when you're saying the subdivision?
Yes.
Because now you're saying A and B.
So lot A is the southern portion?
Which numbers? Which lots? 12, 13, and 14? Because it's on the prior.
12, 13.
12, 13, and 14 are lot B?
Lot A.
A.
Lot A. And lots 16, 1, and 2 would be for lot B.
Okay, that's B. And that's the subdivision?
What we're going to ultimately do is consolidate all of the lots and create two lots. And those two lots will, again, consist of 19,637 square feet and 15,000 square feet.
And you'll be doing that by taking 300 and so square feet from that one area and shifting that over, am I correct?
That's correct. Do we have the subdivision that we put up and that's on the screen right now?
I'm sorry, okay, go ahead.
Well, so you're consolidating all the lots and then subdividing it into two lots. That's correct.
Okay, so the reason, like, if I just said lot 1, and 2, and 16, that's not true, is 1.
Well, the sense.
Go ahead. If you take the combination, well, let me step back. The whole purpose of the subdivision is so that we have a compliant lot for our site plan.
Right.
So the gist is, we're taking the original lots, 1, 2, and 16, we're giving 300 and some square feet to those lots to create 15,000 square feet. That's the gist.
And am I correct, if we were looking, the subdivision plan is basically coming from what would, is existing lots 12, 13, where to accomplish that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Why don't we mark the subdivision plan then as exhibit A2 for identification?
Is this part of the same plan, though? We're not going to a different plan, right? This is part of one set of submitted plans, correct?
There's two separate sets of plans.
Okay.
The minor subdivision consists of two sheets.
A1 is the site plan, and then A2 is the subdivision.
All right, how many sheets is the site plan?
11.
11 sheets. Thank you. And two sheets for the minor subdivision?
That's correct. Thank you.
10 sheets.
10 sheets, excuse me, that's what was presented to the planning board. So I do want the Board to understand that we've been in a continual process of review with the DEP, and that is for stormwater management. And there have been some minor adjustments, there are minor additions to the plan. I will go through them with the Board this evening, but that's why there's confusions for us in sheet numbers. The DEP asked us to add an additional sheet to the set, and that included just the drainage that we're ultimately going to connect into on Third Avenue. I don't want to get ahead of myself as far as the modifications, but that's the reason why there's a little bit of confusion.
And has Insight seen that, or no?
I did have a meeting with Insight, and we did.
So they're aware of it?
Yes.
Okay, all right, proceed.
I'm sorry. Sorry for the confusion on that, so you can go back to, I guess, the second page.
Mr., did we get a date on the subdivision plan? The two-page subdivision plan?
Plans would be equal 28, 2021.
Thank you.
So again, just for the Board, so it's easy to understand, Third Avenue was on the right-hand side of the exhibit, Second Avenue was on the left-hand side. Proposed lot A is on the southern portion, which is the left-hand side. Proposed lot B on the right-hand side. The area that we're going to be donating from, lots 12, 13, and 14, is this area right here, which is going to be used to do the lot B, creating 15,000 square feet. And as a result of doing that, and we're applying water for redevelopment. That's correct. Sorry. So the, our proposal this evening is for the Aegean, which is lot A, to have 27 units. Off-street parking will be 42 parking stalls. For those 42 parking stalls, we'll have two handicap, two compact, 24 tandem, and 14 standard parking stalls. The parking requirement for the waterfront redevelopment zone is one and a half parking stalls per dwelling unit, which would equal 40.5 stalls, or 41. So we're, we have an excess of one stall for the Aegean. For proposed lot B, we're proposing 17 dwelling units with a total of 27 parking stalls, two which would be handicap, two would be compact, 16 will be tandem, and then there'll be seven standard stalls in the onsite off-street parking.
What about EV, Brad?
The parking, the parking requirement for proposed lot B is 25 and a half for 26 stalls. We're providing 27. So again, we're one stall in excess of the requirement. For proposed lot A, the EV stalls that we would be required to provide would be 15% for seven stalls, and which we will provide. And for the Baltic, the proposed EV stalls required would be four, and that's what we would be providing. So our application has been submitted and reviewed for quite some time, and a portion of the overall review process had to do with going through the TRC and also going through the requirements and the review process with the DEP for compliance with our CAFRE approval. So that's, again, the plans have been around quite some time. We've gone through and made quite a few ultimate improvements to the plans, which the TRC recommended. And again, we've tried to meet all of the requirements as set forth in the Insight review, and likewise, all the recommendations that were put forth in the Clarky and Hatz reviews. Our access points for the Aegean, which is the southern portion, which is on Second Avenue, would be adjacent to the corner of Burr Street and Second. And for our access point for the Baltic, would be along Burr Street, adjacent to the corner of Third Avenue. This is a pretty simple layout, pretty simple design, and basically, we have two buildings that we're proposing, providing landscaping surrounding the entire area. Plan that we have up in front of you right now shows, and this was one of the requests of the technical review committee, was to understand, in the interim, prior to the ultimate improvements to the waterfront redevelopment area, there's Second Avenue and Third Avenue. Ultimately, we'll have major improvements, widening the roads and providing new parking layout, new drainage, new storm and sanitary sewer in both roadways, and likewise in Burr. Burr would end up being resurfaced and with new sanitary sewer installed. So those improvements, those improvements are not under the control of the development that we're doing right now, that those are under the control of the master developer, and we don't have control over when those improvements would be installed. So what we wanted to show was, if the development were to proceed without the proposed improvements ultimately to the Second, Third Avenue, what would the area look like? And that's what this, that's what this exhibit shows. This exhibit shows that sidewalk would be constructed, meeting the existing sidewalk, and ultimately tying back into what exists today, and then provide access to both frontages of each building. The next exhibit shows what the development will look like after all of the improvements are completed on Second and Third Avenue, which would include, again, the road widening and new striping, new compliant parking striping, and again, just shows what the ultimate streetscape will look like when it's all completed.
Which roads are widening?
Both Second and Third Avenue.
Like, how?
Go back to the.
Yeah, like how?
So right now, right now, the right-of-way extends probably about eight to 10 feet beyond the existing sidewalk right now. All of that area is going to be streetscape, it'll be hardscape, it'll be a combination of curb, payers, and sidewalk. And again, the roads are widened out to accommodate the angled parking on both sides of each roadway.
Mr. Curley, do you mean?
That's part of the infrastructure.
Do you mean the existing right-of-way or the existing edge of pavement?
The edge of pavement's going to expand, the right-of-way stays the same.
Okay. So there's no change in the lot size of these lots?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's limited to the right-of-way, am I correct?
That's correct.
And this is part of the existing infrastructure improvement plan as part of the waterfront redevelopment area plan?
That's correct.
The trigger on that is, what's the 50%? 50% of the block is developed?
So the modification to the waterfront redevelopment plan that allowed for individual developers to develop, also included a provision for when the block develop, develops, excuse me, more than 50%, then the master developer is obligated to complete all of the improvements surrounding that lot.
That's correct, 50%.
So this would not be considered 50% as well?
For the overall block.
Okay, got it.
However, and I believe the Board is aware that the block development that's immediately to the north of us on Third Avenue is well underway, under review, and in the process of resolution and compliance right now. So that, that portion of Third Avenue is going to be reconstructed, and I believe the timeline on it is immediately after later day to start construction on that.
On Third Avenue.
On Third Avenue, that's correct.
So it's, is it fair to say that on the Third Avenue frontage, we're unlikely to see the configuration that you're showing, where the sidewalk jogs?
The interim, that's correct.
But we would be likely to see that on the Second Avenue frontage?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, again, from an engineering standpoint, this is, again, kind of a boring application. There's not a whole lot, a whole lot to it. We're going to be providing utility connections, pools, water, and sewer on Third Avenue for the Baltic, and water and sewer on Second Avenue for the Aegean. From a stormwater management standpoint, one of the requirements that was mandated by the DEP was to provide stormwater reductions in accordance with a major development for the waterfront. So in that vein, we have surround, and if you want to go to the next sheet or next sheet? Yes, the next sheet. The areas that are hatched in light gray are areas where we will be providing stormwater retention facilities, they're basically box culverts that are surrounding the building, and providing those with an ultimate connection out into Third Avenue. And that, what we were able to accomplish with that is to meet the flow reductions that are required by the state for development of the major development.
What sheet number is this?
So, again, this, this shows the, before improving construction. If we go to the next sheet, which is what hopefully will be shown, shows the improvements as they would be completed with the expansion of the roadway for both Second and Third Avenue.
That reflects the time, am I correct?
Excuse me.
That reflects time into, what is that reflecting? That's different than the prior sheet?
It shows all of the streetscape improvements and the road widening that would be accomplished with the infrastructure improvements.
I have a couple of questions if you want to.
But the Board, but the Board is only concerned with not sheet five, sheet four, because five is the future. It's not, certainly, it's not part of this application.
Six, sheet six.
Is that six?
Is that six? I thought that was, that's true.
No, that's six.
Can you also clarify, the dark gray region represents the building footprint?
That's correct.
And the light gray region represents?
Our stormwater management surrounding the building.
Just what is, are you noting a surface? What is it?
No, no, it's, no, it's a, it's a box culvert structure. No, no, it's, no, it's a box culvert structure. So it'd be a precast concrete vault, basically.
And what happens to that? Where is that placed?
The water that's generated by the roof is directly discharged into the stormwater management system. It's held back with an outlet structure that's located along Third Avenue, and released into the existing storm service system.
And it's called...
So there's no detention or retention as part of that, is that correct? It just flows into that and out?
No, no, it's detained. The outlet structure restricts the flow to 50% of the two-year storm, 75%.
I think maybe, if you could add some dimension to our understanding of what's happening once the water falls, where does it go? Does it, does it slow it down? Does it reduce the impact on the, I think all of those questions, we just want to make sure they're answered.
Bobatol underground, right?
Everything is underground. There's, again, this is connection from the roof leaders into the stormwater management system. The water's then held back with a smaller orifice on the outlet structure, and reduces the flows to meet the DEP flow reductions with the ultimate connection out into the existing, well, what will be the existing storm service system in Third Avenue.
Those are installed underground, am I correct?
That's correct.
They serve as detention basin for walls water, and that is collected, and then it goes from there, am I correct?
That's correct.
So there is, it's not recharging?
No, there's, so the ability to recharge on this particular site, we weren't able to meet the required two-foot separation from groundwater to the bottom of where we're going to need to tie in. And we were unable to accomplish that, and that's a DEP requirement. You need to have that two-foot separation.
So each building, each building has its own? They don't depend on each other?
No, they are all connected.
They're all connected?
That's correct.
Okay.
There'll be a cross-access agreement between the two buildings, and these are, it's basically one storm service system.
Well, maybe, I might be naive, but if we're talking about turning these into two separate lots, that's the end game, right?
That's correct.
That's the end game.
That's correct.
What happens if Lot 1 gets salted?
It's a cross-access and cross-drainage easement that would be accomplished with the subdivision filed with the deeds.
Help me out here. So it goes with the property.
Before we do that, perhaps I should have our professionals warn them, because they might have some comments to help out as well. We haven't done that yet.
Yeah, that would be good.
Jason and Michael, you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you'll provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and that's what the truth is.
Yes.
And Jason, if you could start just your name for the record?
Jason Fichter, Inside Engineering, Board Engineer.
And Michael, for the record?
Michael Sullivan, Clark, Hinton, and Hints, Board Planner.
Thank you. So, they can have an easement between the properties, but there has to be an easement that generally determines who's responsible for what, you know, as far as fixing things, repairing things, maintaining things. That's all going to be, have to be part of their easement. And that's certainly something that either the township, or, I'm sorry, the city attorney and/or our office, or Mr. Serpico's office would be involved with reviewing, and as well, Mr. Fichter's office would be reviewing to make sure that all of the drains requirements and those easements are going to be satisfactory in order to be able to accommodate what needs to be done for the stormwater drains.
It would be in the governing documents or condos, number one. And number two, it's not unusual to file with the deeds the means by which certain drainage systems would be required.
Okay, the thing that concerns me, obviously, is that when you say the documents are filed with the condos, from what I read, they're two separate associations.
Exactly.
So that's what, there's nothing holding them together, that's why I was just...
That's the question.
Except this drainage is holding them together.
That's the question, because I would do that.
Now, go ahead, I know that, I'm sorry, I cut some people off. Go ahead. Anybody?
I have a question.
Go, go.
Bob, how deep, I'm looking at the systems that are underground, particularly along the property lines, which is most of them. How deep are we talking, are those systems?
It ranges from about four to maybe six, at the most, six feet of cover.
Cover?
What is...
Invert. From the invert, you mean? The bottom?
No.
So six feet plus?
Six feet of cover, correct.
So what, I guess what I'm getting at is, how do we protect the adjacent properties during excavation?
So there's, there's at least two to three feet of separation between the edge of the structure and the property line?
Okay.
Later is going to have to be sheeted during construction.
During construction. Would that sheeting remain in place?
If need be, yes.
Okay, so, not something we often do at the board level, but maybe we should include some sort of design as part of this process? Should it be approved, however you want to handle that, as a condition that a structural design be provided to show that the adjacent properties, including the right-of-way, would be protected during construction and so on?
No.
Thank you, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
The following up on that, the plans just show the shaded area. They don't really show the location of the structure. And if you were to look at the plans, they show that shading going right up to the property line. But I just heard that they're going to be two to three feet off. Is there a detail that locks that in, in terms of like...
All of the dimensions are on the utility plans as far as the sizes, and then the setbacks to the property lines are also on the dimension plan.
They're on the dimension plans?
Yes. The setbacks to the building to property line are on the dimension plans. The size of the detention basins are on the utility plans. So the width, so if it's a...
Why don't we show that?
Yeah, it would be great if we all knew.
This is noted as a 10-foot-wide facility. The setback from property line to building is 13 feet. That's that area. This is noted as an eight-foot-wide facility, and the setback distance is 10.
So the one on the left looks like it has a little, the separation you were talking about. The one on the right looks like it's up to the property. But either way, I, you know...
The dimensions that I have on the detention facility itself are supposed to be governed. It might be shaded a little bit wider.
Okay, all right.
Is it actually going to touch the building foundation? And so you, and so, just the last thing. You said there was four to six feet of cover above these?
Yes.
And so, what's the depth below that? Did I miss that?
Three and a half feet.
Three, so it's three and a half feet, and then, so these are quite a ways down.
On the one end, yes. And that's at the back, that's at the far back.
With the base, maybe max 10-foot excavation?
Yes.
Okay. And these are concrete?
Again, from an engineering standpoint, that's pretty much the, just, I don't know if you wanted me to...
Turn that lighting?
You had a concern over the parking and the circulation within the parking garage that was noted in your report.
Why don't we just, let's go through the, before we get to that.
Can I ask if your, is your presentation done?
No.
No.
Okay, just wanted me to just, sounded a little light, so I'm just waiting.
Embellish her...
Well, there are things that have been left out, let me just say that. And I know Mr. Caris knows the process, so let's, let's do it all. You know, we haven't talked about A-Fax yet, we haven't talked about real parking yet.
That would be a different witness that would be speaking about that.
The engineer doesn't speak about that?
The mechanical one. No, no, it would not.
The location of mechanical, we'll go through that.
Yeah, I thought that the engineer did that.
The location, we're going to go through with the utility leaders, Bob.
Okay.
I have a, so...
Go ahead.
We're still on stormwater, right? So can you, have you calculated lot coverage and such things? Are you the right person to be reviewing that with us?
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, so if you would just put it on the record, what's the lot coverage for A and B? And what are the requirements that apply? What are the requirements that apply, so that everybody knows the information we're talking about?
Why don't we go to the cover sheet, so we can...
So, the overall drainage design is based upon looking at the project as a whole. And that was, that was so that we could complete our connection to Third Avenue. And this was done at the request of the deed.
No, I just want the information.
So the overall, the overall allowable impervious surfaces that are allowed within the waterfront are 90%. We're much below that. But we still meet the flow reductions as required by the DEP. We're less than 50% of the two-year storm, less than 75% of the 10-year storm, and 8% of the 100%.
So, if I may, the waterfront redevelopment plan says you can cover 90% of the lot?
That's correct.
You are below that. Will you provide us with the number that you are achieving?
Just for the board's verification, in terms of the process, if you get to the plan, we ought to go before the mayor and council, who serves as a development agency to make sure that we are in compliance.
Understood. We weren't there, these people weren't there.
Understood. But just, I don't want there to be any misunderstanding.
We just want to make sure that it's all...
I have a question, if, I don't know if we're going to come back to it, but in Michael's report, if we're still talking about the stormwater part, was the cover, did we talk about the landscape cover exit? I can refer to the report, but it's the issue of the planting above the vault?
Yes, our landscape architect will be getting a test of that.
I do have another question on this, just in very general terms, Bob. This, so, this is considered a major development as a whole, not two separate...
That's correct.
Projects, but one as a whole, a major development. Is all of the major development compliance being achieved onsite?
Yes.
Okay, so, water quality not a requirement? Right, because you don't have the motor vehicle surfaces.
Besides that, we're in a redevelopment area.
All right, and then the recharge, you're out. So it's really just the quantity reductions, and you're handling it all onsite?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, good, thank you. That's significant.
Yeah, that's very helpful. We don't always know every in and out.
Yeah.
Layer.
Let's continue, let's go to page seven of the plan. Okay, looking at page seven, what exactly are we looking at?
This is the soil erosion sediment control plan. Again, basically, we're putting a building over the entire area. So there's very little, from a soil management standpoint, that we can do, we can provide construction entrances at the garage area, and so does surrounding the project. Inlet protection on all inlets that would be abutting the property. There are no, there are no existing inlets on Second or Third Avenue right now. The closest inlet is at the intersection of Kingsley Street. Soil erosion sediment control notes, these are standard notes. Likewise, this is a standard note package that's required by the soil erosion sediment control to provide assurance that you're not overcompacting the soils. And this, this exhibit was included in the event that we were going to possibly put a construction tunnel around site. We're probably going to withdraw that request. We did have some temporary side incidents also located on this plan. They were located at both the corner, excuse me, of Third Avenue in Berg and Second Avenue in Berg.
So where will the staging?
Temporary construction.
Where will the staging be?
As we begin to construct the Aegean, the staging area would be on the Baltic side. And then, as the Baltic progresses, there's going to be very limited staging areas.
So what we're going to have to do, we're going to have to make do on the site and then around the site. We'll take whatever reasonable steps we can to ensure that there is as little interruption, certainly on the roadways and on the parking spaces adjacent to the property. But again, we have buildings that are going up on the site, so that basically encompasses the entire site. So we're going to have to do what we can within the surrounding area, again, making best efforts to limit any interference within the road.
So which one will develop first? Which one will come first?
The larger building, which would be the southern building, or the Aegean?
Southern one facing Second Avenue.
Now, keep in mind that the other building commenced construction a few months afterwards, because we have to get these done within two years.
So the staging for the second building will most likely occur on one. Or now, that is correct.
And how long does it take to build? What's your timeframe for shutting down Third Avenue?
About 18 months, or nearly.
Forget shutting down Third Avenue, but as far as new curb cuts for both buildings or garages, how many on-street parking spots does the city lose?
I'm sorry.
How many on-street parking spots does the city lose because of new curb cuts?
So, to evaluate the overall parking for the project, what I did was I created a couple of exhibits. They were not included in what was submitted to the town, to the city, excuse me. But, and I, I have them here, and I can mark them, just so that the board understands.
With the board's permission, if we could put those up, so to...
But the bottom line, to give you the short answer, there is no loss of on-street parking stalls in the future condition.
No, I'm, we don't know when the future is. So how about when you, when this project is done?
So the parking that exists on the street today is non-compliant. They are too close to stop signs, and they are not the correct size. They're, in particular, on Berg Street, the parallel parking ranges from 17 feet to 19 feet. So that's, that's non-compliant parking. So there's 13 stalls that exist on Berg Street. When we're done, there'll be eight stalls, compliant stalls.
When this project is done, these two buildings, not the future state, it's going to be eight stalls, not 13. Is that on both sides, or is that just on one side?
No, just on our side.
Just what?
Just on the project side, so on the, on the east side of Berg Street.
You're only speaking about Berg Street so far?
That's correct.
Right.
Okay.
Well, when you widen the road and add crosswalks that are not unangled, will you be losing parking on the opposite side of Berg Street, not yours side?
Well, you know what, let me step back, let me step back. To be compliant, there's a requirement for a separation from a crosswalk, excuse me, a stop sign to a parking stall, which is 50 feet. Currently, it's 25 feet, that's what exists today. That's correct, that's Title 39.
Bob, just to clarify what you said, so I understand. Existing parking on the street today is, how many again?
There's 13 on our side.
With non-compliant?
Non-compliant.
How many would it be compliant? How many would it be compliant? If today's parking was compliant, how many would there be?
You know, the reality is, if you're going to develop lots, you're going to need access to the project.
Just looking for a number.
I understand that, but that's the nature of the law.
Well, you know, we're going to be asking lots Second and Third also. So...
11.
11. So we would be losing three because of the new driveway. So we would be losing three because of the new driveway coming in. Right?
No, I'm not going to answer that correctly. That, that's not accurate. If you're going to put compliant parking on Berg Street, there's only going to be eight stalls.
But you say right now, there'd be 11?
Yes, that would be. But
So we'd lose five non-compliant or three compliant?
To be
Why should I explain? So right now, there are 13.
So the, so the distance between the what's, you know what?
Do you want to point it out on the map, Mr. User?
Yes.
But the question was from Jason. If the street was compliant, there would be 11. So we went from 13 to 11, now you're going from 13 to 8. So are we losing three, or are we losing five? Okay.
Any minute, Joe. Is there a, is there a plan to make those spaces compliant at some point?
Yes.
They're saying at the end of the project.
That's
Not, not the future project, this project.
The master developer.
No, not the master developer, but this
Y'all going to make Berg Street parking compliant?
Just the one side.
Just the one side.
The east side.
No, you left, did you leave?
Too much more.
Your question is, does the city have a current plan to make these compliant?
Yes.
James? Did, does the city have a current plan to make it compliant?
Not particularly, no.
Okay.
So the question of whether or not we're losing three spaces is semantic.
It's actually five spaces, five non-compliant spaces.
Five non-compliant spaces.
We're going to mark this as A3 for identification, and that'll, that document is, especially we have the proper title in that case of the parking downstairs.
We speak, we speak each other.
If I may, so this exhibit is entitled Parking Exhibit Proposed Street Improvements Site Existing Conditions. This is page three of four.
And do you have that? You don't have that, okay.
And
I don't think we have it, do we have it?
No.
Okay, you don't have it and you don't have it. Okay. That's fine.
As trying to be prepared for the board members' concerns over existing parking, I prepared this exhibit. This was also a request when I met with Jason, Jason's office, to discuss the overall. And then, again, the title of the next page, which I will work as A4. Parking Exhibit Proposed Street Improvements Proposed Site Development, spreadsheet four of four.
Are you all going to see that?
No. Not really.
Is there a date on those, A3 and A4?
They're both dated 2/25/20.
2/25/20.
There we go.
Better?
Depends on what, what Mr. Curly points to.
Okay, so so the distance, just so, just so that the board understands, I took the effort to, again, want to make sure that I was accurate when I was telling what stalls were going to be lost and what were not going to be lost. I went out to the site yesterday and measured the parking stalls myself, and also measured the distance that exists today that has strike. So what exists today on Berg Street between the driveway of the existing dwelling and the area that is strike for parking right now is measured at 166 feet. However, that first parking stall is within 25 feet of the stop sign. So that, that first parking stall is non-compliant. So if you take 166 feet, subtract out 25, and then do the math, you end up with six stalls being able to be constructed in that area. The area south of the existing dwelling has a distance of 94 feet. And again, if you use 22 feet for the measurement, you're only going to be able to get those parking stalls there to be fully changed. So the total number of parking stalls that would be allowed on Berg Street would be 10 in total.
Are you using 22 feet for all your parking stalls?
Correct.
And that's with no curb cuts on there?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, and what is being proposed?
Eight.
And that's because of the curb cut in order to have Agress and Egress onto the northern building?
That's correct.
So it's two parking spaces, we believe, that we could lose, correct?
Correct. So now the difference comes in on Third Street, Third Avenue, excuse me. Because there's an existing dwelling there today, excuse me, Second Avenue, excuse me. There's an existing dwelling there today that we, that's going to be eliminated, and we'll be able to accommodate parking in that area. So we're going to be picking up the stalls that we lost on Berg Street, and they would be added to Third Avenue.
Second.
Second, excuse me. And how many parking spaces is that? So
Go ahead.
That's just diagonal parking in front of that residential structure that's going to be demolished?
That's correct.
Yeah, but there's parking there today in front of that, in front of that house that's being demolished is
No, there, there is no parking in the driveway.
Not in the driveway, no.
Can't park in the driveway, and then you have the immediate driveway next to that. So that's going to be modified, and we'll be able to be parking full parking stalls all the way to the corner, and again, be compliant with the crosswalk distance 25 feet off.
Today, there are two parking stalls in front of the house that you will demolish. There are two that can be actively used. Just saying, just throwing that out there. Now, all right, how many do we have, and how many will we have?
So for the existing conditions on Second Avenue, there's nine stalls.
Compliant or no?
They're not compliant.
Not compliant. How many compliant?
So I'm not going to be able to answer that question, actually. I don't want to, I'm not going to in order for me to do that, I'm going to have to attach an exhibit
Fair enough.
to be as clear as possible, because I can see that this is a sensitive issue. I thought I had it down, obviously, the board members feel differently. So in order for me to ensure that I'm accurately getting the correct dimensions on all of this, I don't want to answer incorrectly.
That's fine.
So Mr. Karas, can I just ask For the future, for any future applications that you have? Just, this is just a sign. If we could have this type of analysis prepared, because you know that the board is very sensitive to parking. Thank you.
And we'll be able to clarify this
Understood. I have no doubt you will.
Looking at A3 for identification, what is it that would show?
So, but I would like to just answer one more thing, because Mr. Mayor asked, asked a very clear question, are we losing any parking stalls? And my answer is no, we will not be losing parking stalls in the future condition. In addition to not losing any parking stalls on the street, we are also providing one additional parking stall as required by the overall waterfront redevelopment requirement
Where does that differ?
On, onsite, in our, in our off-street parking, onsite under the building.
Under the DEE statute, where the Title II, an additional parking credit for providing parking, am I correct?
Two for one, that's correct.
And by adding that, those EV space as indicated, we get, we get those credits onsite, am I correct?
Technically, yes.
And so, so that in a sense adds additional parking when you look at what is required onsite for offset any parking that we're losing on the street, am I correct?
That's correct.
All right, we'll come back, we'll have the
Yeah, that after.
We'll elaborate on that, because you kind of lost
So there, there's a state statute that is provided for us having to require EV parking whenever you have a residential development. That requirement mandates that you provide 15 percent of any proposed parking stall, stalls that are being provided as EV stalls. Part of the incentive that was, that was established and installed into the municipal land use law was that each one of those EV stalls counts two for one, up to a maximum of 10 percent of the total parking that you're allowed, that you're allowed to reduce the parking count by. So let's just say I have 100 stalls. And let's, let's make it easy so that it's 15 percent. So if I had 15 EV parking stalls, I would be able to have a total parking allowable in my structure of 85 stalls, not 100. So you get two for one on the EV stalls.
You're just talking about one parking space.
It's the, it's the requirement, if you're looking at, it reduces the overall requirement to statute. So if your requirement was you had to provide 10 parking spaces, when you do the EV, you're actually reducing the requirement of what you have to provide onsite. That will sign by the governor in September, that statute.
In what you were just saying, you mentioned something about one parking, you're providing one off-site or something?
Well, you get a credit of two for one under the EV statute. So what we're doing, we're reducing the requirement onsite. So by way of example, if we needed 50, and now we only need 45, we should get that EV credit. You're actually have that five additional parking spaces that are available onsite.
But are those available to the public, or just the people that live there?
But they're not available to the public, but when you look at how the waterfront redevelopment plan is created in terms of making sure to take away parking spaces on-street, that you're making up for them onsite, off-street, doesn't mean that they're available to the public.
So it's really just kind of semantics, because you're taking away on-street parking for people that use it, that don't live in those buildings. So when you take away those parking spaces, even though it meets whatever the requirement is, you don't have parking for those people that use it.
But we're meeting the waterfront redevelopment plan and the EV statute.
I understand you mean the statute, but I'm saying though, is you're taking parking away from onsite, off-street parking that will get used the
You're absolutely, are you going to
I just want to make sure
I understand that, but again, as I go back
I understand that.
But even aside from that, if you go into redevelopment, you're going to have vacant lots, and you're going to break buildings on those lots, you need access to the lots.
I understand.
And that's what we're believing as part of the development.
That I understand it, I understand what you're saying.
And, and not to beat a dead horse, but when we're talking about, when you mentioned initially that you're providing 42 stalls, are you, did you already subtract out the EV, so that, you didn't subtract those out?
There's 42 parking stalls.
Okay, all right. And to be clear, those 41 that you're required to do, you have two that are ADA compliant, right? So therefore, that one extra is an extra, let's just say, an ADA spot, perhaps? Right?
I don't understand.
Meaning that, that those 41 stalls that, that you're providing, I mean, you're only required to do 41, and you're providing 42.
Actually, no, when you take into account EV, you're required to do less.
Let's say 42, because that's reality, that's reality.
No, let's say 41.
All right, 40, okay. Okay, 41 is what you're required to provide, and you're saying you're doing 42. Out of those 42, two of them are ADA, right?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Just, just throwing that out there.
Just to be clear, though, when you say required, always keep in mind, because this is going to come up with every application.
Yeah, with EV, that's fine.
We do that with this project, we're here.
We are, exactly.
And now, Mr. Curly also testified that there's a kind of profile of these parking spaces. Some are tandem, some are compact, and some are regular, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and so what, no, let's focus on lot A. Of these 42 parking spaces, how many are tandem spaces?
24.
Is that 24 spaces, or?
24 spaces. 12.
12, 12 slots for 24 cars.
That's correct.
Okay. So I think we should just all be aware that there are tandem spaces, which is not a totally common, for us, you park one in front of the other, sort of like
So you'd have someone down there to
No, because they would be, any tandem space would be for one unit, and they would be deeded to that particular unit.
But, but your point, yes, Rick, somebody would, if you're parked first, if somebody starts to harm you, somebody's to have, but we should just point out that there are tandem spaces.
Is that common?
It's not common here, but it's common in many other places.
It exists in North Beach.
Just out of curiosity, A4 and A5, is that your current, or is that since it's 2020, or is that what it's going to look like when the master developer's done?
Look, this is A3.
A3, okay, but again, you said it's from 2020, so is that your plan, or is that the master developer's?
This is the
Would that be with all the infrastructure built on?
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, you've gone through also turning radiuses to ensure that the parking garage can operate efficiently, am I correct?
That's correct.
Why don't we go through that a little bit?
Before, before we leave that, can I just ask one question about the, that may impact the on-street parking? Are you minimizing any cuts that you are making in the, in the street to access the bill? Are you minimizing the width of all of the access points to the very minimum in order to try to create as much on-street parking when you're done as possible?
What is the width of those?
So, so our, our entrance area is 20 feet wide, our driveway is 16 feet. Could it be brought down two feet? Yes, it could. However, on the Baltic, which is the northern lot, that area falls within the 50 feet of the stop sign. So we wouldn't be able to put a parking stall there anyway. And likewise, the area that's on Second Avenue, our driveway's within proximity of 25 feet, then you would be, even if we shrank it down a couple of feet, we wouldn't be able to get a parking stall there.
So there being no benefit, reducing the width of that driveway?
I don't believe so, no.
And the, and the width of the one that's on Second?
They're both 20 feet.
We're going to mark this as A5 right now. Bob, why don't you describe a piece of A5?
This shows the, the below grade parking area and the orientation of where the parking stalls are. This is the same exhibit that is was part of the overall exhibit package. But what I did was, I was able to take a standard-sized vehicle and run through turning movements. And the building on the left is the Aegean, and it shows how a vehicle would be able to access the, and if I may. to access the, and if I may. This shows the turning movement of a vehicle trying to get to the rear portion of the building, again, entering, making the turn, getting into a parking stall, and then it goes back out, back out.
What do you say entry? Why don't we identify the street where that is?
This is Second Avenue.
Okay. So coming off of Second Avenue, we have a 20-foot wide driveway, am I correct?
Correct, 16-foot garage door. So then if you scroll down on the exhibit, this shows the entrance that would be obtained if you were trying to enter the parking stall that's on the far end, far west side of the building. And again, the vehicle can come right down the driveway and enter right into the parking stall, who's going to be backing out, could back out, and then again make the exit of the inside.
So you've mentioned that the parking will be deeded to specific units. So is that only for the tandem spaces?
It's all spaces.
So somebody may be deeded to compact spaces?
That is correct.
So in, on the Aegean, the two compact stalls are located in this area.
Understood, I'm just pointing out that somebody's going to get two compact spaces.
That's correct.
Can you go to your drawing at the top of this page? Thank you. So can you zoom in on where, yeah, keep going? This, this area, yes. It looks like, what is this hatched dark area? Are those your columns?
No, those are, that's an overhang.
So they're not, that's not obstructing the space?
That's correct.
Because it appears, so in our future drawings, can we make sure what's, because this appears that there are obstructions in some of these spaces?
No.
But, so you are testifying that these dark gray areas are not obstructions to these parking spaces?
That's correct.
Okay.
And what is it that we're looking, the right side that we're looking at, which building is that?
This is the Aegean, and again, it's just a different access point. The previous area showed us accessing these two parking stalls. This again is showing the far end of the parking garage and how a vehicle would enter and back out.
Why don't we go to the other buildings?
How many units are not EV parking? I have a little piece of parking.
Or all units?
All parking?
So again, this shows a car entering and being able to exit out of the, out of the parking garage, entering into before this newly stall.
And this is the project of Baltic.
That's correct.
And that's entering the rest of...
This is Burger Street.
In that particular example that you're pointing to in that northeast, as you called it, stall, does that count as two spaces where you're showing your passenger car?
No, that's a single space.
Okay, so that area that has the cutout, which is part of your foundation wall, that is not a space?
That's correct.
Okay, in your future drawings, can you just make sure it's clear what is and what isn't a space?
Sure.
Thank you.
Do you need to deed both of the compact spaces to one unit?
Numbering spaces or some would be helpful, just...
So what happens if you don't have to deed a tandem or a person has a unit that they don't need two spaces to someone else? Do you get deeded the second space? How does that work?
No.
You would, the tandem is only going to go to one unit, it's not going to go to two separate units.
Just to argue a second, what if there aren't any people that require handicap parking that live there?
You're obligated anyway by law.
No, I realize that, but what happens if you don't have enough parking spaces to be deeded?
Well, but we have enough parking spaces.
No, what I'm saying is if you don't have a handicap person that needs a handicap spot, what parking space do they get if you deeded all the other spaces already? Because you have 40, you have 40 foot spaces, two of which are...
But there's enough, there's plenty of seven units as a whole. So there should be plenty of parking.
Okay, that's what, I just want to make sure that's what gets...
But you're, but it seems in conflict with like if, if unit A owns spaces one and two, some unit will own one of those ADA spaces. And so I think Rick's question is how do you know that a person who needs an ADA space gets that spot? Is that the question?
Yeah, I mean, so you have an excess of spaces for vehicles?
I don't think you deed an ADA, you deed other parking spaces. There's enough regular spaces. There's plenty of...
You have an allocation actually of those spaces.
Who's speaking? Wait a minute, we have to put that person under...
No, that's not necessarily my client. But there are plenty of parking spaces who are obligated to provide an ADA by law, but there are plenty of parking spaces per respective satisfied EV development.
So there's extra parking.
It doesn't have...
Because if there's 17 dwelling units.
But if you take into the EV math, then there is enough.
Well, even without, without the EV, by the waterfront redevelopment plan, there's sufficient parking on the site, but obviously we can take it to the EV credit and have an access to the parking.
Is this 12 tandem spaces? There are 12?
12 doubles, 24.
I should break down.
So as I testified to before, there's two, in the Aegean, there's two handicap stalls, two compact stalls, 24 tandem stalls or 12 tandem areas, and 14 standard stalls. In the Baltic, there's two handicap stalls, two compact stalls, 16 tandem areas or eight back-to-back stalls, and seven standard stalls, total of 27.
How many dwelling units need Aegean?
27.
So you need 41, they have 42. Minus EV, EV math.
But you are assigned, but if you're, that's I think your point is that if there's 27 dwelling units, you are going to have to assign two of those spaces to every unit.
Well, we'll also get into the breakdown of units, they're not all multi-unit.
So some are getting one space and some will get two and some will get, okay, I think that's where we have our piece of information. There's the piece of information we're after.
So I hate to revisit others, but the on-street parking on Second Avenue, that's going to be lost with the entrance to the Aegean. How many spaces does that affect with the entry and the marking for the wrong space from the curb into the next parking spot?
On Second Avenue, there'll be, in the future development, there will be six parking stalls on Second Avenue for our frontage.
How many are there currently?
Okay, so again, I'm...
That was the last we had.
I counted the house.
We'll come back to that.
And there's, there's another, and I just want the board to understand, the area's been restricted a number of times. I'm going to go out and take, I'll have to go out and take photos of this, obviously I'm going to have to come back and provide additional testimony for the board. I apologize for not having this more clearly identified for you. I thought I measured it accurately yesterday and I thought I covered this, but...
Also bring us copies too, instead of just having...
Certainly.
Yes, yeah, we'll provide clarification.
Right, right, and there should be what the situation's going to be once you finish your development and what the situation will be for the future.
And you said you have no idea if the master developer's actually going to complete all those.
Second Avenue, no.
Okay, so yes, we definitely need to see what your, you just want to think in the future when it may not be for a long time and you're going to be developed.
They have that, they're showing that in their drawing, but the Second Avenue doesn't show the improvements.
Well, we'll provide clarification.
And I apologize to the board.
Another area I want to get into is lighting on the site. What is being proposed?
And this requires possibly looking at some of the exhibits that show the elevation views. If you want to scroll through. Yes. And so, the short answer for the board members is the lighting that's being proposed is old building mounted lighting, there are no, there are no fixtures that are being proposed. And the building mounted lighting really doesn't even touch the ground anywhere surrounding the building other than immediately at the entrance of the building itself. So it's all accent lighting that is reflected onto the building itself. And that's the lighting exhibit that was prepared and submitted to you. And perhaps Frank, the architect, will be going through that to show you the locations of the wall-mounted sconces. But this is the lighting exhibit, it basically shows that no light even really touches the ground surrounding the building and it doesn't, doesn't impact any property lines at all.
And that's key. So what we're looking at, this particular exhibit, it's showing what enclosures are in the information.
Mr. Carras, before you do that, is this exhibit part of what's been marked already? Or is this a separate page?
It was submitted as part of the application package, yes.
Do you know what page or what sheet number?
This is a separate sheet.
That's what I thought, so we haven't, you haven't...
There was a subsequent submission. It was like last week, there was the turning movements and the lighting.
So why don't we mark this and we're up to A?
A6.
And six right now.
And it's sheet one of one?
That's correct.
So should we be asking you questions about this or wait for the next person?
Well, in the sense it's his exhibit, we need to establish obviously the foundation in terms of...
No, I wanted the board to understand that there's, the proposed lighting on the building really has no impact to the lighting levels at street level and adjacent to the building.
And that's what's reflected in this exhibit, am I correct?
That's correct.
We'll go into further detail in terms of the lighting, but I just want to establish what effect that lighting was in.
All right, I see one area that I'm concerned about at the moment, and that has to do with, I don't know how to say it, but it's right here. What we have right here that's adjacent to the house that's here?
Yes.
I see that it's a, that's the only place, a little further to the right, we always have a .3. That's the highest number that's around this house. Can you tell me about that?
Those are the two lights that are adjacent to the entrance, the stairwell entrance into the...
So there's an entrance that people can come from the street to come down that?
It's an emergency access, that's correct. It's an emergency access.
So, oh, it's an emergency, so people will not be coming in and out of that?
No.
Okay, so just so we have some idea, and I don't know, maybe our own engineers can help us out here, but what is a .3? Because, you know, visually I don't know what a .3 would be.
So to give you a rough idea, a full moon, non-cloudy night is approximately what you would be able to see a person face-to-face six feet away and clearly make out there. That's a half a full moon.
Okay, so is that a point what?
That's point, that's .5.
That's a .5?
That's correct.
So this is a .3 and is that facing down?
Yes.
So the home that is, that is here, how high, how high up is that lamp? Just unless we go to someone else that in the future, in another, that...
I'll have Mr. Carras.
All right, we'll go, we'll postpone that. Okay, all right, so I'm concerned about that. And the other thing that, I'm sorry, I didn't mention is that when you're coming out of the driveway on Second Avenue, the headlights are going right into someone's window. And second, when they're coming out of this, there is a building there where their windows are, what's it called?
Brits.
Yeah, the Brits, Britwood?
Britwood.
Britwood? It's going right into their window. I just want to know, is there, is that true? Because I'm not, because I can't tell the height because, you know, you have differences. You know, you have a challenge with this property because of the heights and how things are. So I was just wondering what...
It would be similar to a single-family dwelling that would be positioned on that light, on that corner that would have a driveway, it's no different.
Right, but when they're at that driveway, their headlights are going, I'm not sure, I'm just not sure how high that, the Britwood is. So that, so that when you're coming out of that driveway, that you're not right into somebody's living room staring, you know, having the lights go right into their living room. That's what, I can't tell, I'm not saying it's happening, I'm saying I can't tell from what we have here. And maybe that's something that someone could testify at another time, would be fine. We're always concerned about that kind of lighting. I know that the one on Berg goes, does not go into anyone's living room or any other window, so I'm okay with that.
We'll take a look at what's...
Okay, if you wouldn't mind.
Do the architectural plans have representative sections showing the elevation from grade all the way?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we can, as long as I get that at some point, that'll be fine. Okay, all right.
Yeah, Bob, I just want to ask a question. You said that there would be no negative impacts from lighting, but you didn't say that they are fully compliant with the, with the land development regulations.
In what regard?
In with regard to the light levels at the property line.
There's no light level that exceeds the property line at all, .1.
And the fixtures that will be placed there are shielded, I think?
We'll go through that with our...
Okay, the architectural testimony.
Okay.
I just have one question, Bob, if I could. What is the plan to light the driveways just for vehicle pedestrian conflicts?
The plans I submitted didn't indicate anything. I know that we had a discussion, could a, could a light be placed at the end of the driveway wall when, when the garage door is activated? That could easily be accomplished, could be mounted to the inside of the wall so that it just lights the area.
Okay, yeah.
If we can do a pedestrian city type lighting on it. All right, there are no other questions, I'm going to go through some of the work section.
I do have one question, and this gets back to, I'm sorry, the streets again. Can, if you could put up the exhibit that shows the sidewalks and the streets, the configuration of the sidewalks, not on that plan, I'm sorry, I don't have the sheet number, that one. Can you explain why you're creating these offsets for the sidewalk away from the curb line and up towards your building rather than, rather than having them go straight?
We're meeting the existing sidewalk, that's one.
Explain what that means, please.
So the area that we're, that we would be reconstructing...
Excuse me, can you zoom in on that frame, please? Thanks.
We would be meeting the existing sidewalk that's out there today.
So the sidewalk curves like that today?
No, it goes straight. No, it goes straight.
That's for the future road improvements. Is that the idea?
No, that's meeting, that's the existing roadway width and meeting the existing sidewalk.
I think the question is why doesn't it just go straight out to meet the straight sidewalk?
Doesn't work on that.
Because it has to be reconstructed later.
Right.
But what's later?
Today it's curved?
It's not curved.
Okay.
That's for the infrastructure improvements, right, Bob?
No, no, that's the existing.
Eventually, the sidewalk will align.
Oh, I see, so you're anticipating that straight.
The back of the walk.
The building, you're anticipating the sidewalk being pushed all the way back to that?
The back of the walk that's shown.
Right.
Bob, if you show sheet five and sheet six, I think it'll be clear.
Obvious, yeah.
That information, your information is clear.
This back of walk line is where the proposed in the future sidewalk limit is.
You just, so you might have to redo this?
No, no, this is going to get reconstructed anyway. There's no way that this is going to. When this gets, when the roadway gets rebuilt and the roadway is wide, this whole area is going to have to be completed.
Even though, even the back of, even the part that's adjacent to?
Straighten it.
Why don't you just straighten it out? Why are you going to do a little job?
If that's what the board would desire.
Now, I'm just curious, is there some reason or other than just?
The idea was to bring it back to the future development line. Again, if the board feels that they would want to have the sidewalk around the street.
Bob, let me go back in history here. Tell me if I'm wrong, because there's a lot of history.
It did have to do with the drainage and the ability to install temporary things.
Right, so it was our direction initially, our, the board. I think it started with us probably. The idea was they were going to put inlets where that sidewalk is curving in. And we suggested if you're going to put the inlets in, put them where they're going in the infrastructure improvement. So you don't put an inlet in now, tear it out later, put in a new one. But in order to put the inlet where it's going in the future, they had to squirrel the sidewalk behind it. So that's kind of, is that accurate, Bob?
That's correct.
Yeah. That's how that started.
So.
So if you look at sheet five and then sheet six.
Do you actually have to put these outlets in?
Those inlets will be installed in the future, which we don't know when it's going to happen.
Right, so, okay.
You'll see, if you look at sheet five, you'll see the sidewalk go behind the inlet. And then if you go to sheet six, you'll see the sidewalk go straight. And the inlet is still there.
I think we're agreed.
So that's the history of how that came to the table.
If there is no infrastructural reason to do that.
There's no reason to curve it. It should be straight.
Yes. And then when it's reconstructed.
Whenever it can be reconstructed, it'll be reconstructed. Because, only because we don't know when.
Hopefully soon rather than later.
Well, hopefully, but you know. No? Okay.
Thanks.
Going through reports?
Are there any additional questions from the board for him to report?
There are no guarantees.
Not yet.
No, there are no guarantees. That we don't have any.
I just have a question for Mr. Curly. I know the calculations of this detention system. Give us the reduction percentages. Is there a provision for an overflow and you get a freak storm of some type?
Yes.
Where does that go? Where does the outlet go?
Goes into the storm service system.
It goes, okay. So there is a provision that if you get a flash that you haven't anticipated, you have an overflow?
In excess of the 100-year storm, yes. There's still capacity for the ability for water to pass out of the outlet structure and into the storm service system.
And can I just ask, I don't know, maybe Jason, you know, is this, does this go to Wesley or does this go to Sunset?
Goes to Wesley Lee.
This goes to Wesley?
That's correct.
Which is fluviol.
Is there a reason, so is there a reason the crosswalk on Second are still perfectly diverted, but on barrier angle?
Say that again.
Is there a reason the crosswalks on Second and Berg, crossing Berg, I'm remembering it as Berg, is straight up?
Are you fucking kidding?
And why those are angled?
So the. The opposite side of the roadway is not being reconstructed. So we have to meet the existing sidewalk that's there and the existing corner. That's why it's.
Why is that one straight then? Is that side being reconstructed right?
This handicap, this was, this handicap still is being reconstructed at the corner, not at the corner. So it's going to go straight across. This could be moved farther away from the existing corner. I'm curious. I would want to check, I would want to make sure that there's not a utility corner. I think there might be a utility corner, but I don't want to say that.
And those striped areas, have you looked at any other approach to those for potentially? I don't know if this is part of the infrastructure plan, like an actual curb bump out rather than just a painted area? Landscape area or whatever it's that. You know what a curb bump out is, right? Like we have them on Main Street where the actual curb steps out to create a.
Mr. Mayor, maybe you could. History on bump outs.
All right, we're, I mean, we don't need to derive that.
Generally, people don't like bump outs because plowing, street sweeping, et cetera.
I like them from walking and not getting hit by cars.
Okay.
To answer your question. With the overall infrastructure that those items were discussed, the orientation of the curb line that's being, that is shown here in the future is what was ultimately agreed to. So I understand.
Any additional questions? All right, what I'd like to do now is start going through some of the professional reports and a number of comments that are in the reports. First one I'd like to address is an insight report dated February 22nd, signed to. Ordinarily, we get this marked as a board exhibit.
Exhibit B.
B, B.
Curly, I'd like you to go right to page three, page 11. And there's a comment there with any existing proposals or shall be shown on the subdivision plan. No objections to that, am I correct?
That's correct.
Andy, I'm sorry, what was the number?
Number one.
One on page 11.
Got it, okay.
No objections to that. Applause shall provide proof from the city tax test for newly created lot numbers. No objections to that, am I correct?
That's correct.
And executed owner certification on the subdivision plan, correct?
Yes.
And you will provide needs and bounds descriptions as required, am I correct?
Just give him the numbers as he goes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good housekeeping.
You got it.
Thanks.
Five. Going down, number five, copy of the survey referenced in the site plan is not provided. Existing adjacent lot numbers are not provided in the site plan, so no objection given there?
That's correct. And I was able to supply the boundary surveys to Mr. Fitz's office on the 30th, March 30th.
The location of individual trees and grist trees are not shown on the plan. No issue with information being limited subject to property, that's on the demo plan?
That's correct. It's on sheet two.
Number seven, asking for information with regard to the direct drainage of the property. Just demand hope, so will, et cetera, objections to that?
That's correct.
On to next page three, four, and eight. Again, existing proposed easements are not shown on the plan. Testament with regard to any easements, if they are being proposed, discussed in cross easements, am I correct?
We did provide testimony in that report, yes.
Okay. And this comment addresses what we already discussed with regard to the two systems connecting in and cross easements. What are they doing, am I correct?
That's correct.
Number nine, the dimensions of the parking areas, driveways, and parking stalls are not shown on the site plan. They are on the architectural plan and you provide testimony with regard to the turning degrees, am I correct?
That's correct.
No loading area shown on the plan. We do not provide, such as they requested, am I correct?
That's correct.
Roof lighting plan was submitted, but a site lighting plan has not been provided. That was, that was testimony before with regard to that one, am I correct?
And that was a subsequent submission, yes.
Phase of the project, I believe we were ready to provide testimony with regard to that, how the construction would take place. One would begin, the other would start a couple months after this.
Can you go back to 10th for a second? I'm sorry.
Oh, sure.
And Jason, you're five and 10?
Uh, which one is standing?
That's the loading area.
Oh, well, I mean, we've seen this a number of times on different projects. That's up to you guys if you're comfortable with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question. How does that work for people moving into the buildings like where?
Because we don't see the doors, so we don't even know where, how people are getting in yet.
We'll get into a description of how people are actually entering into the building and getting in. But ordinarily, like most of the condo projects, the apartment projects, very few from what I've seen have loading spaces. People pull up and they load and they leave. It's, I would say though, it's different with regard to commercial as opposed to when you have commercial buses. When you do, and obviously in the downtown, it's tough, but if you're not in downtown, try to provide that. That I understand. When you're talking about a residential, people moving in, people are buying units, you're not going to have a lot of people out there.
Can we get a quick clarification on the lighting plan, which I think was number 11? Did you address rooftop lighting? You'll do that later. Got you, okay, thanks. On 13?
13, description of the proposed project, I think we covered that. We will continue to go through that during the course of testimony. Zoning review, number 14. It discusses that we are complying with the plan of the apartment that is being proposed. 15, again, the parking spaces, discussion with regard to RIS. We obtain cap approval, which is important. Note, we just learned this project. The applicant shall provide testimony to number 16 regarding the minimum treatment percentage and the minimum cover of 5%.
There's an excess of 12% provided outside.
And we'll go through that also with our landscape testimony. Compliance with the building height for the development control plan, the waterfront redevelopment plan that already had been addressed as we went through for the TRC. Then obviously the mayor council, D and B project compliant, thus allowing us to get to this point. Proposed location, mechanical equipment, we'll deal with that with our architect. Number 20, these methods, we'll get that architect signage. I'm sorry, any signage being proposed for the project?
Other than building numbers, no.
Number 22.
You know, excuse me, there's something. Temporary signage that was, that I provided testimony to on the intersection of Berg Second and Berg Third. But that's temporary signage.
There won't be any signage for the Agen or the Baltic?
Other than the street address, no. Building numbers.
22, under consent block, shall be operated, no objections to that. Subdivision plan shall state whether the subdivision will be thawed by the map or by the.
By map.
By map. 24 is architectural. 25, lighting, again, we'll go through more of that with our architect. Beating the ground while we can help. I have sex with this property, that's me, people are waiting down there. Streetlights, that's for your master developer, any additional streetlights. Payment repairs shall be indicated, any objections to that?
We will let it.
Curve details are advised for required soil presence in nearest joint, any objections to that?
We will let it.
Same with 28, no objections to that.
That's correct.
Applause shall submit a certification for freehold soil conservation, I believe that was already done?
Yes, 13, freehold soil.
Well, has that been submitted?
It's been submitted and approved, and it was approved on June 15th, 2020.
No, I'm sorry, has it been submitted to this board?
The town gets copied on it, but I can supply a copy of that, that's not a problem.
You do have a copy, okay.
30, recyclables will be, provide testimony on that, stormwater management. I believe we've gone through all these comments already. Dealt with that issue. The 32, the drive aisles, you've already testified to that, am I correct?
I provided the, we provided the turning movement exhibit that shows that the vehicles can adequately enter and exit the parking garage.
And we'll have the widths and the parking space sizes testimony from our architect.
That's correct.
Signage required for proposed parking stalls near which shall be dimensioned. No issue with that, am I correct?
Yes.
Details appropriate signs for site ten shall be provided on the plan, objection to that, am I correct?
That's correct.
There is a discrepancy with regard to the garage width. We'll deal with that with the architect, sometime we're going to make a little revision. I know there's a comment about making that garage wider to 18 feet, which we will be doing. And we'll have architectural testimony with regard to that. Minimum curb line open number 36, 26 feet has not been provided. Exceptions required, testimony shall be provided.
Instead of 24 feet, we're providing 20. We believe that that's more than adequate for the entry and exit for the parking garage. Again, we're requesting it, we're an exception.
37, the site triangle shall be added to the plan at the location made access drives and courses according to requirements.
Yes.
I'll go into that. 38, dimensions shall be added, which indicate the distance from the driveway to the nearest intersection. Exception may be required, can you address that?
I don't believe that this requires an exception. Again, I'll provide the dimension and if need be, an exception will be required.
36, or I'm sorry, 39, wheel stops, we have no objections to that, we'll provide wheel stops. 40 was the EV parking, which we have addressed. Operation proposed garage and its impact on pedestrian vehicular safety. We'll agree to do pedestrian warning type systems, address conditions, am I correct?
That's correct.
42 deals with NJDEP cap requirement, can you address that?
So we've had multiple discussions with the DEP and our last submission that we provided to them met all of their requirements and they indicated they were satisfied with the plans as we submitted them. So I don't have, we don't have a compliance letter yet. I would, I would think that we would have that within the next two weeks trying. And I will continue to call it.
43, testimony with regard to compliance with the requirements of the set level of development. Testament page 90 of the waterfront redevelopment plan. Again, the mayor council had made a determination that the project is in compliance with the waterfront redevelopment plan. Set it over to the panel. TW.
Of course, we do require trade no works approval for this project. And we will be submitting the appropriate applications for endorsement by the city and the mayor.
45, the availability capability of each utility to provide service to the project, can you address each of these?
We've contacted all of the utilities that would be needed for the project and they can provide the appropriate designs. Jersey Central is probably the only one that's any level of complication.
I'm sorry, Mr. Curly, I didn't hear what you said.
I said Jersey Central would be the only one utility that would have a little bit of complication. of complication, but other than that, all utilities are easily provided.
What's their problem?
They're going to have to provide an underground service for the Aegean. And what that'll, what that'll necessitate is taking power that's on the existing utility poles, bringing it underground into a manhole in front of it, which is shown on our utility plans.
And they're going to do that?
Yes.
Don't hold your breath.
That doesn't require any access over the Baltic site, right? That's just coming from?
No. There are two separate transformers.
46, 88 curb ramps and sidewalk.
We'll provide the additional spot elevations to demonstrate compliance.
47, asking for clarification, three foot, four foot white paper.
It's a four foot white paper ban in accordance with the infrastructure component.
Okay. 48, testimony with regard to public infrastructure components. The street furniture will have the architect address that. HVAC 49, screening on that will have the architect address, those issues, number 49. Server connection fees, no issue with that. Number 50, 51, ability for emergency vehicles to access the site, can you address that?
An emergency vehicle will not be going into the basement.
But it will be sprinkled, am I correct?
That's correct.
Now, so the last one is just structural engineering.
Can we just go over 46 again? Was that, will somebody be reviewing the 88 ramps?
Yes, I'll be providing additional, additional spot elevations to provide compliance.
Because in, from what I remember for the TRC, I believe that we were talking about lifts as opposed to a ramp?
That's for access into the building, that's correct.
Okay, so all that's going to be discussed?
That's correct.
At another time. Okay. By you or someone else?
That'd be your architect.
The comments from the planning report, most if not all, will be addressed by our architect. We've already, their comments with regard to the parking, we've addressed. Remaining will be handled by our landscape architect.
So you're complete?
Yeah.
Okay.
May I, just one question?
You may.
Going back to 23, I just wanted to be clear with the board. You're going to file by MAP, but any easement, you're going to file that separately, correct?
Easement would have to be filed separately.
Okay.
All right, does the board have any other questions having to do with the testimony of the engineer? Anything else on board? No? Do our professionals have any questions? Satisfied?
No, not at this time.
With this testimony?
This for now.
We've only started here. Okay. Okay, we're going to open up the questions to the public for anyone that has any question of Mr. Curly, of only what he has testified to regarding engineering. You can go up to the microphone and we can start those questions if anybody is interested.
Please state your name and address.
Sure. I'm Jill Mundron, 1004 Burke Street. The development is building around my house.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Are you able to hear me? No?
Oh, is the mic on?
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
I'll go closer, sorry. So I'm Jill Mundron, I live at 1004 Burke Street. I own the house, it's in the middle of this proposed development.
Can you spell your name, your last name?
Of course. M-O-N-D-R-O-N-E.
Thank you.
It's a little longer. Hyphen, G-H-
Maybe which?
G-H-I-L-I-N-O. It's a hyphenated last name. It's a mouthful. Okay, so I don't know what I don't know and clearly I don't know a lot about any of this. So I've really relied on your expert questions and appreciate that. What I've heard around the storm drainage, I guess I'm, I'm a little bit confused. So I can see behind the buildings, the Aegean and the Baltic, where the majority of the storm drainage system is installed. I see very small ones right around my house, right, the inside. So how, how does that ensure that I'm not going to be flooded if in fact we have these 100-year-old storms, 100-year, once a 100-year storm or whatever?
It's a completely closed system. So there's, it's, it's completely sealed and closed system. So there's no storm or structure that's immediately adjacent to your property. There's piping, that would be similar to roof leaders, that connect the structure. There's no structure adjacent.
Why don't we, why don't we do this? Why don't we pull that up so we can foresee, so we can see exactly?
Thank you.
We'll show people. One second, Jeff. I don't like the noise. Which sheet was that again? Of the first?
The bottom one.
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to find the first. You gotta find the first and I'll put it back in.
That's your stem, I can hear that little whistle.
It's vital.
Have someone else do it.
Is that top? Yes. Not this sheet though. Maybe this sheet? Here we can, right, this sheet? Yeah. Good. Did it happen tall?
Anything? You're good.
Everybody got it, bro? Is that your house?
If you wouldn't mind blowing it up a little bit so that-
Sure.
So that the audience can see.
Is this your building? So there's no, the closest stormwater management system is about 15 feet away from your property line along the front edge of Burr and probably about 18 to 20 feet away from your property at the rear. Again, there are some connecting pipes, but there's no stormwater structure that immediately but your property.
Can you explain again how this system works, just so that we're clear and that you understand? That's all going underground, am I correct?
That's correct.
And how does that operate? Where's the water coming from and then how does it get retained and then they happen?
The water is generated from roof roof. It's conveyed from the roof through internal pipes that go directly to this closed system and then ultimately discharge on third avenue into what will be the proposed storm sources.
I have a question.
Just?
The area that's around the building is all sod and landscaping, so what about water from those areas? How is that captured? Is it, how does it drain off? Especially around our house, I mean, you know, that's all landscaped and sod, so-
So, so right now this will run forward and likewise it will run forward as it does today.
But it's behind the house?
This runs from, there'll be a high point located probably right in this area and drains around the corner now. This could also be, this could be made an open grate to accept surface water, but there's the amount of water that's, that's there is extremely-
Well, we want to, we want to make sure that there is no impact to that home, obviously. So whatever we can, so are you saying that that back line that you were talking about, is that, that's, that's not what Rick was asking? Was it that through the grass?
Correct.
Because you said there's a high point?
Correct.
And then the water goes, is in the grass?
That's correct.
And it won't go towards her hall?
It's lower, the property is graded away from the adjacent property.
Okay, so her property is higher?
So there's no retaining water?
No. Actually, that's true, because there is, there's an existing concrete retaining wall that is located on her property at this back door. That exists.
I'm sorry, I need to interrupt your questions.
No, it was good because it spawned a few more from me, so thank you. So, so you know, we sit up on a, on a hill, right? I think you've testified to that tonight. So how is it that I'm pitched towards the street, right? You'll be flush with me, possibly higher, I'm not sure. How is it that you're not going to hit with the stormwater hitting the back of my house?
It's going to be graded around the-
So you're, you're going to be graded lower than me?
That's correct.
Both buildings?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we, and we should see that when we get to the elevations, correct? On your, on some of the-
Architectural testimony, no.
Oh, no.
We can, I can speak.
Only if you're sworn in.
Not sworn.
Why do we wait?
Right, I just want to make sure that that's clear.
We will address all that with your architect.
Okay, so we'll, we'll table that.
Okay.
Keep us honest.
Sure.
Is there grading plans?
That's what I'm asked, that's what-
That's the grading plan right there.
The grading plan is incorporated.
And then as to the earth excavation, right? Significant around my house, and I think you mentioned that within two months of the Aegean starting, the Baltic will start, so massive earth movement around my house. Any, like I expect that there will be some repercussions, right? It's a 100-year-old home. I mean, it looks nice, been renovated, but it's a 100-year-old home with a 100-year-old foundation. So how, how am I to have any assurance that it's not just going to crumble with all, because that's massive earth, earth movement, earth excavation?
And there was an existing dwelling that was approximately four feet or less off of the existing dwelling that was removed and there was no impact to your home at that point. We're going to be substantially farther away. There won't be any impact to your property.
I'm sorry, there was what removed?
There was an existing dwelling that was immediately adjacent to your house.
One, I bought next to a boarded up home. I know, if that's what you're talking about, right?
Without, without an impact to your dwelling?
I believe the foundation's still there, just buried.
Just allowing-
I'm so sorry.
So if that was removed without any impact to your dwelling, we're going to be substantially farther away from it. There won't be an impact to your property.
Substantially farther away, so that was 10 feet from my, a little less than 10 feet from my property. I believe that's where you'll be on the right-hand side as well.
Mr. Curly, what is the distance between the buildings and the house that is situated 13, 13 feet. And it's not uncommon to have construction of buildings immediately adjacent to other buildings, am I correct?
Actually, within the waterfront redevelopment zone, you're allowed to build right up to the property.
And you're building right up to a property, building right up to an adjacent building, steps are taken to ensure engineering-wise and construction-wise that there's not remaining damage to that adjacent building, am I correct?
That is correct.
And that will be taken here, all steps necessary to ensure reasonably that no damage is going to occur to the construction, the buildings to the adjacent house, am I correct?
That's correct.
No piles being driven or anything like that?
It's not intended that the speed piles support.
May I ask what those precautions will be?
From our protection standpoint, that there's, there will be sheeting placed, if there's, if there's excavation issues, it, there's, the short answer is there's many methods that can be utilized to stabilize the soil immediately adjacent to your house.
And sheeting is one of them?
If need be, but there's no mandatory requirement of that sheeting.
Normally there's a survey that's done to adjacent properties before the construction starts and look to see what conditions are and ensure that efforts are needed to protect the place.
Has that survey been conducted?
Not, not been.
Will it be? Will it be?
Ultimately, yeah.
Did, I, correct me if I'm wrong, please, keep me honest. I thought that we had testimony that there will be sheeting.
That would be for the stormwater management structures, not necessarily for the foundation of the building.
And so if it's needed for, to protect her home, it will be done?
Whatever is required to ensure there's no dam, it's not unusual to have construction next to adjacent.
Right, agreed.
That's common.
Right.
And the steps that are taken to ensure those properties are protected will be taken here. We can't say exactly what is going to be needed because the survey hasn't been done. We're not up to that point. But certainly all reasonable steps will be taken.
Would that be the construction code official who would decide whether or not those steps were taken?
Whoever is responsible for ensuring within the municipality would be involved. I can't say who it is, I don't know who it is.
But this is a decision that's made by the city? Is that what you're telling me?
I, I don't know. I do know that from construction, ordinary construction, you do a survey of the adjacent property. That's just common when you're doing construction and then contractors are familiar with what has to be done to ensure that other properties don't get affected. Within the city, who is responsible for that?
No, no, I'm not asking who, I'm just asking, is the city the one that's responsible to make the determination to make sure that her home is not?
And normal, they come out, they do their inspections, you know, that's just common for your city officials to do that.
And if, would they be the ones that determine if sheeting is necessary?
I can't, that I don't know.
So who would? Who's protecting her home? That's what I want to know.
We can definitely, we can definitely work with the board professionals to ensure that a safe methodology for the installation of the foundations of the adjacent structure are maintained.
Would, would, it wouldn't be out of the ordinary for the planning board to have that as a condition of any approval for that to happen, correct?
Correct. We don't want to see any damage to the adjacent home. Again, that's why the survey is done.
Okay.
So whatever needs to be done to ensure that the home is not damaged during the course of construction, we can put it into a resolution, but it's going to be done anyway.
A geotechnical report of some sort will be provided to indicate the soil compositions and things like that and likelihood of subsidence and-
Right, but, but it, there's two things. There's a, a survey of the, of the building inside and out.
Right, the subsurface.
Then there's the propensity for what might go wrong in terms of any geotechnical information and then the measures.
I would, I would suggest that we ask there to, because of this closeness and the potential sensitivity, I don't think it's too much to ask for a geotechnical analysis as part of-
And that was submitted as part of the stormwater management report.
So we just need to make sure it's all in there and that we can understand.
One thing, keep in mind, we're, you know, when you go through the subs can redevelop or process, you have to put in an application, the qualifications of the buildings. It's cavemined. This is not their first writer, they're very experienced in building and obviously building next to adjacent properties.
Not next to Jill. Jill.
No, I understand, but I, in a sense, I want to give reassurance that we're talking about experienced developers that know what to do to ensure that adjacent properties-
Understood. Nobody's questioning the qualifications of the applicant.
Why don't we do this? This may be the appropriate time. My client who's-
Okay, then let's, let's swear.
You okay with that? If you raise your right hand, you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And your name for the record?
Carl Erler. Carl with a C, last name's E-R-L-E-R. I am employed by Caveman Homes. I am division counsel for Caveman Homes. I'm sorry, we'd like to, there were a lot of issues flying around, I thought I might be able to address your concerns. We are happy to do an inspection of your home before we do construction, check out the foundation, in fact, we welcome that. We'd like to do that for all the adjoining structures and we've done that in the past in other urban settings and we've developed communities, because this is not the first time we've developed a community in a urban setting. We also, we will have a geotechnical expert, we already have one, we retain for the site to evaluate things like where the groundwater is at the site. We've done test pits out there. We're welcome to, you know, have- We're welcome to, you know, have our geotechnical expert generate a report as to what we would do to ensure that your foundation is not compromised during the construction process, and we're also happy to cooperate and work through that process to coordinate that construction. So if there's things that, for instance, the board engineer would like to see in terms of making sure that we shore up the foundation, to make sure that we're not excavating too close that would compromise your home, we're happy to do that as a condition of any approval.
I accept all of that.
That's the sort of thing we would expect to do, and we would like to come and look at your home and make sure that we're dealing with it correctly.
I appreciate it, because Ms. Erler, Mr. Erler?
Yes, that's correct.
It's odd to build in a U shape around a single 100-year-old home.
We're not...that's comment as opposed to question for the board.
So I have a question about...it's okay, guys, it's not the time.
Please.
The sidewalks. I wasn't quite clear when there was discussion around widening the street, right? And how does that affect Berg in particular?
The future width of the curb only changes, I'm going to say about six inches. It doesn't get that much wider in the infrastructure improvement for the future development. It's not our intention at this point to reconstruct Berg Street. We will be putting in a new sidewalk immediately adjacent to what we're disturbing during our construction. But at this point, until the master developer completes the infrastructure improvements, Berg Street's not going to be wide.
Okay. And then the light, the lighting that's pointing downward into my house, is that the architect's topic?
Correct. There's nothing that's going to get straight down that does not project out. It's a wall scunt, and there's details that the architect has seen.
Okay, I'll wait for that. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to ask a question of the engineer? Or any testimony that was given?
Hello? Warner Baumgartner, 4025, how are you?
Just a little closer, Warner, please, and then microphone if you don't mind.
Hello?
Yeah, thank you.
I've never done karaoke. Okay. Can we go back to the very beginning of this set of documents here? I just want to make sure I have a good overall view of what's going on here. So the lot that you're calling the Baltic, that's a completely vacant lot currently, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the one called the Aegean has a structure on a part of it?
That's correct. This is a multifamily residence.
Oh, okay. And you're purchasing that, or have already purchased that?
It's part of the...yes.
Okay, it still exists, hasn't been demolished yet?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's the subdivision you were discussing, to merge those lots into one lot on the southern east side, the corner with that multifamily lot? Okay. I'm interested in how the newly created lot and the pre-existing lots relate to the public spaces around them. You had testified earlier that you're allowed to build to the property line, but I think I see in subsequent slides, if you could go to the next slides to show the building envelope, you've actually voluntarily created a setback? You're not to your property lines, are you?
That's correct.
Okay, what are the setbacks actually? Like on Second Avenue? What's the setback from the property line to the building? It appears to vary, actually. It's like narrower at the eastern end, a little wider at the...
So what...
Let's say Second Avenue.
Explain to me which dimension you would like, and I can...
Let's say Second Avenue. What's the setback from the property line to the building on Second Avenue?
At the corner of Berg Street and Second Avenue, the setback is 19.7 feet.
Okay, and at the other end of the building?
12.6 feet.
Okay. And then on Berg for that building?
At the intersection of Berg Street and Third Avenue, it's 17.4 feet.
Oh, that much?
No, no. He's talking about...
Yeah, the setback there. Doesn't look like...
No, he said he wanted to know about the Baltic on Berg.
No, the Aegean, where you're...right where you're pointing at.
At the Aegean, so that corner?
Yeah.
At Second and Berg?
Yes.
The setback is 19.7 feet.
No, from Berg. That's what I'm talking about, not from Second.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Six feet.
Six feet, okay. So the building is setback from the property line, six feet, and the Baltic replicates that? It's also a six-foot setback on the Berg Street side?
Five feet.
Five feet, okay. Why did you choose different setbacks for the same block face?
To maintain a larger setback to the existing apartment, apartment building complex parking lot.
What existing apartment complex?
The one that's immediately to the east of the Baltic.
If necessary, I mean, one's five, one's six, you can match them before they can be offset.
Right. Wouldn't it be more desirable to have a consistent setback so that you have a straight view down the street? Even if it is a one-foot offset, it could be noticeable, correct?
I'm going to disagree now. Wouldn't it be noticeable?
Okay. So you have...there's no rationale for making one five and one six? It just happened that way?
To provide a larger setback to the parking lot that immediately puts our property to the east.
Okay. Let's go to Third Avenue then. What's the setback on the Third Avenue there? At the western end there, yes.
17.4 feet.
Uh-huh. And at that end?
18.
18. Now, why is that reversed from the Second Avenue side?
There's a jog in the front of the building.
And why is that? Again...
It's architectural feature.
That's right from architecture.
It's an architectural feature, okay. So from a site plan perspective, you didn't consider sightlines? You're letting the architecture dictate the setback instead of the sightline, is what I'm reading from your answer?
No, the architect is going to testify as far as the facade, how it was unbuilt.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah.
So I understand your question.
Because this is an engineering testimony with a site plan, and I'm asking whether he would believe that it would be more desirable to consider the sightline as the primary motivator for how far the setbacks are instead of the architecture?
In parallel to Berg Street's probably more important.
Parallel to Berg? What I'm pointing out is that the southern end of the property, the Aegean, the setback is narrower at the eastern end, whereas on Third, it's wider at the eastern end.
He provided his answer.
Okay.
So you argued with him.
I'm not arguing.
You provided the answer.
You're going to argue with me?
And you're arguing why you don't like it.
No, I'm not. Chairperson, am I arguing? I'm simply pointing out some facts.
And now you received your answer, you asked your question, you got your answer. Let's move on.
Thank you. Okay, regarding the parking, you had testified to the effect that there's a state law that mandates a 50-foot setback from a stop sign before a parking lot, parking space can occur?
That's correct. That's Title 39.
Okay. Are you aware there's an exemption to that?
No, no, there is not for new parking. For new parking, there's no exemption to that.
Berg Street would be considered new parking? It's pre-existing parking?
It's going to be straight? Yes.
Are you aware there's an exemption where the municipality...
They just testified.
I'm asking a question. Chairperson, I'm asking a question. Requires just a yes or no?
Right, is...if you could just answer what...
May I ask the question, please?
Yeah, I think you did.
No, I didn't. I keep getting interrupted in the middle of it.
Go ahead.
Are you aware that there is an exemption by state law that allows a municipality by ordinance to change that setback to 25 feet?
I'm not going to answer that question.
Okay, thank you. And as far as the lighting, we're going to have other testimony about the specifics of the lighting fixtures themselves?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anybody else from the public that would like to ask any questions about what was testified? Okay. All right, next witness.
You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could state your name for the record and spell it, please?
First name Frank, last name Minervini, M-I-N-E-R-V-I-N-I.
Thank you, Mr. Minervini.
And just to be clear, we close at 10:00. So that doesn't mean that you can't ask questions at the next one. It just depends on where we land. Okay?
Mr. Minervini, can you please give the board a better look at your qualification?
Sure. I am principal of MB&amp;K Architecture of Hope New Jersey. Company I started in 2000 with my business partner Anthony Danemark. I have a bachelor of architecture degree from the New Jersey Institute of Technology School of Architecture. I am licensed in the state of New Jersey Good Standin. I have been accepted as an expert witness in architecture at this board, as well as boards in over 25 other municipalities, and I am a member of the New Jersey Architect.
Yes, we are familiar with your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Minervini, you're familiar with the project, correct?
I am.
Are you sure of that, some architect in the project, am I correct?
Correct.
Have you prepared plans relative to the project?
Correct.
Why don't we get those plans up and identify those so we can work?
Sure. So the plan set that the board is looking at, I'm going to not go in the exact same order. I think listening to some of their comments tonight, it'll make sense if I bounce around, I'll discuss each sheet, I'll tell you what sheet I'm on, but it'll make more sense, I think, as I get into it. With that in mind, I'll start with our site plan. So as discussed, and I'll make it even more clear, we've got two projects, two buildings that were proposed. This is Berg Street, running in effect in the south. Here's Third Avenue, east-west, as well as Second Avenue. The first of the buildings is, we're calling it Aegean, for lack of a better term, Building A. The second building is the Baltic, Building B. I'll concentrate right now on Aegean. So the Aegean, we're proposing 27 residential units in a three-residential story above a partially subterranean parking lot. The main entry, and we'll do more detail as I get into the plan, for the Aegean is along Second Avenue here, as well as the entry for vehicles and exit is here.
Mr. Minervini, if we could, I don't think we've marked this plan, so...
I thought I said page seven.
Did we say...I'm sorry, I missed it if you did.
It's page seven, and the date is 8/6/21, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we're at page 21 of 35.
Yes, I'm starting on sheet 21 of 35. There's 35 sheets, but it will make more sense as I refer it into the presentation.
Thank you.
So for this specific building, the Aegean, which is the larger of the two, it's 27 units, I'm going to give you the setbacks. We briefly touched the setbacks just in the previous conversation. But along Berg Street, the Aegean's got a six-foot setback at this point. Along Second Avenue, it's 19.8 at this corner, 12.7 here, and that's purely because Second Avenue is not perpendicular to Berg Street. It's on a bit of an angle. So our building, it is a rectangular, has got to choose one of these streets to be parallel with. In this case, because it's our longer facade, and Mr. Curley mentioned this, that we are parallel to Berg Street. So with that in mind, and Second Avenue on a bit of an angle, the setbacks at Second Avenue are not exactly the same. The setbacks to the east are 10 feet, so our building is 10 feet from the property line at the east, 10 feet to the property line at the north, where our second project is, that I'll be getting to a bit later, 10 feet from the rear of the existing two-story home, and 12 feet at our northern property line, adjacent to the two-family home. So I'll go through the floor plans of the Aegean, starting with, pardon me, the parking level. This is sheet 2235. We discussed already the number of parking spaces. Bob just did, but in this particular case, it's 42 parking spaces. Berg Street oriented here, Second Avenue here. Here is the vehicular entry and exit. This is our tandem parking spaces that I discussed already. We've got two compact parking spaces here, a row of standard spaces, includes above two handicap spaces, and then a row of straight-in parking of all 18 by 9 feet. All the spaces are 9 by 18, with the exception of the compact parking spaces.
And again, how many compact parking spaces?
Two. There are two compact spaces in this corner right here. In those cases, they're 9 feet wide, but it's 16 feet in depth.
Go on.
All right, so we've also got our elevator access, so if you park your car, you enter this way, you can access the residential floors from the elevator here, or you can take this stair. So you can get to the floors above with either the elevator or the stair. This secondary stair that we had discussed briefly before, that is closer to, not quite adjacent to, the property here, is purely for second needs of egress. So this will be swing-out only, not swing-in, no one will enter there. And again, it's purely a second needs of egress.
But that's only emergency?
Correct.
Okay.
And I would be going up.
Correct. Yeah, we are...and my elevations will help tell that story a bit better, but this is partially subterranean.
How deep?
We're about four feet deep. It's a very interesting existing site, because unlike most places in Asbury Park, this particular street, the topsoil is about two and a half, two, three feet, depending on where you are, above the sidewalk. So the existing condition is already up three feet, and if you walk down Berg Street, it's very apparent that it's not a common condition. It is the old Berg Street. We're showing some bike storage, our trash here, which is connected via a chute to the spaces above, electrical, mechanical. I have an exhibit that I can get to later on. One of the comments in the planners' report was that our trash room doesn't meet the requirement of 12.4 feet per apartment unit. We corrected that very simply by expanding the trash room into the bike room here, and then putting the bike rooms here, because we don't really need this mechanical space, and then putting recyclables here. I'll get to it, but very simply, we've gotten that to work so that the trash area meets the requirement. Shaded areas that you see here are very simply recessed balconies on the first floor above the apartments. When I get into the next sheet, that'll again make more sense. So with that, I'll go to sheet 23, which is our first floor plan and our first residential plan. Den to orient us, Second Avenue, Berg Street. The main entry is along Second Avenue, so we've got a, we'll call it a grand set of stairs, half the main entry, which is approximately centered on the building on Second Avenue. With that, we've got nine apartments per floor, and for the breakdown...
On the top range, breakdown?
Yeah, and I have it even a bit easier, because we've got it here that we're dividing and so...anyway, I'll just read them, they'll make more sense. So of these 27 units, and there's three residential floors, nine units per floor, two of those are one-bedroom units, three of those are one-bedrooms with den units, seven are two-bedroom units, and then 15 are two-bedrooms with dens or three-bedrooms. They're very similar, with the exception of the entry doors into bedrooms or deposits. So again, 15 two-bedrooms with dens or threes, seven two-bedroom units, three one-bedrooms with a den, and two one-bedroom units, and that gives us the 27. Very simple circulation, public circulation, common circulation, we'll call it. So you enter here, here's our hallways, and all the apartments are accessed off those two lines of the hallways. These gray areas show the balconies that are on each floor, and each apartment gets one. They are six feet in depth, recessed four feet into the building, projecting two feet from the building. And obviously, we would like to provide outdoor space for these apartments, but also it helps us with some of the facade articulation, which I'll get into in a bit. So move on to the next sheet. This is our second floor plan, perfectly the same with the exception of... This is our second floor plan, perfectly the same, with the exception of the entry area where we now have bedrooms as below. 25, sheet 25, is our third floor plan, exactly the same as the plan below. Just to orient us again, here's our L shape common hallway. We've got a means-of-egress stair here, your trash, compacters, pardon, the trash storage here, with the chute that goes down to the ground floor, to the apartment storage, your elevator, which gives us our ADA compliance, as well as our then second stair system for our means-of-egress. Roof plan of Aegean, and there is a common outdoor amenity we're proposing. I'll move into the landscape architect to give you more details on that, but I will discuss the location of mechanical systems. So all the condensing units for the building have been set in minimally 15 feet from the building's edge, and that's the building edge, not the property line. So we're the distance from the property line plus the building's edge. So our thought is, and why they're placed here, is that they will not be seen from the street. We are minimizing the amount of sound that anyone on the street or adjacent property would hear, and we're getting out of view. But our landscape architect will go into the actual design of this amenity space. So that is the Aegean. What I should have done, let me go to just one particular sheet, I probably, what I tended to do, was just to give you a glimpse of what the buildings looked like before I get into the architecture. So I should have started with this. This is our Second Avenue. Here's the existing two-story home. That was the point of some questioning previously. This is the Aegean, den fronting on, in this view, fronting on Berg Street and the Baltic. With the Baltic, and I'll get into that, here's our vehicular. So, okay, now we'll go to Aegean, and that takes me to sheet 27, which is a similar site plan that I had discussed previously, but this one focuses on the Baltic. So the Baltic is the building that is on the northern portion of our property, also along Berg Street, but instead of course Second Avenue, we are now on Third Avenue. And similar to the condition on Second Avenue, Third Avenue is not a perpendicular street relative to Berg. And with that, our property is not a perfect rectangle. That's the reasoning for these dimensions in terms of setbacks, different from one street to another. Completely different conditions. The buildings were each designed in relation to those specific conditions. So for the Baltic here, again, three stories of residential, above a partially subterranean parking lot. We are five feet in this case from the, this dimension, pardon me, is five feet, and I briefed Mr. Curley that this dimension will not be perceptible. The reason for that is we've got a parking lot here, and the thought was we would give an extra 12 inches to our rear property line. Having said that, if this board wanted us to push this building 12 inches towards the east, it could be accommodative. The main entry for residents on Baltic is off Third Avenue at this location right here, and the vehicular entry is along Berg at this location right here. In terms of setbacks, we've got 13 feet from this point, and here, and I should have mentioned before in Aegean, in both cases, we are proposing to have our ADA compliance or access to the first residential floors from approximately sidewalk level with a wheelchair lift, and I'll show them when I get to the building elevations. But for the Baltic, that location is right here. So we gave the setback of 13 feet to that wheelchair lift, not to the actual structure. To the actual structure, it's probably another five feet or so. So I mentioned we've got five feet here, we're 12 feet three inches from the property line, which is on the southern portion of the Baltic, and we are 13 feet from the property line that is along the eastern portion of the Baltic. So now I'll go for the floor plans of the Baltic.
Before you move on to the floor plans...
Sure.
Could we just, the development control plan for the waterfront, the development area stipulates a maximum height here of...
Three stories.
And you are in compliance with that?
We are in compliance with that.
Thank you.
Again, we were before the mayor...
Yeah, understood, I just wanted to get it out.
Yeah, and when I, so the ground floor, pardon me, parking level is partially subterranean, and as I understand, the redevelopment, as long as we are a certain distance below range, above the average grade, then it doesn't count for the floor, and that's the condition.
Right, so my next question is, the garage does not count because the development control plan allows it?
Exactly. As a story, correct.
Okay.
Just one other thing, you mentioned about the Baltic, that the ADA was on the, you showed me where the ADA, where the lift was there, where is it in Aegean?
It's right at the front entry stairs.
Okay.
Right here. And again, I'll make it more clear as I get into the, I missed it, if I can go back, but I'll...
No, it's all right, I'll look it up. Thank you.
All right, so we're sheet 28 of our set, and this is the parking plan for the Baltic. Starting...
I'm curious, but we don't have that much time left, and the public, do we want to hold questions from the public about the testimony that's gone so far until next time? Or do we want to sort of stop his testimony and give people a chance to ask him questions about what he testified tonight? Well, we always end up in this strange situation, because people who are here and have heard this testimony may not be here next time. I'm just, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
The only problem I would have is that he may be going through a lot of areas that may answer a lot of those questions.
Could, I mean, well, the questions should only be in relationship to what he has testified tonight.
Right.
So it's just a question, a personal question, I'm sorry.
I mean, I'm fine if we go through to the third floor and the roof...
Okay, sure.
And have a nice cutoff, because you're right that we have, you know, our time is limited until it gets carried, so...
So I should leave the architecture till the next year?
Yeah, you could just finish up what, same thing that you did with Aegean, let's finish up with the Baltic.
I feel like we should just have a logical break.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so the, pardon me, the Baltic, which is on the northern portion of the two buildings. The main vehicular entry is along Berg, located here, and we do have it mentioned, that's 16 feet, but as Mr. Kara said, this could be increased to 18 as per the planner's recommendation, and that applies to both buildings. With that in mind, we've got 27 parking spaces. I'll locate the tandem in terms of my cursor here, as well as here. One of the questions come up about this, that were cut out with wheelchair lifted, that's only accounted for in the space. We've got two compact, same as the other design here, and then this is a row of 9 by 18 spaces, with the exception of the two ADA compliant spaces. As before, these gray areas denote balconies, recessed balconies and projections above, I'll get to that. But in terms of how this works, you can enter your vehicle here, you can take your parking space, you can go up to the residential floors via the elevator, or in terms of the means-of-egress only, you can access this stair, which takes you to the sidewalk or to the grade level, or, pardon me, this stair, which takes you to Berg Street. So one takes you to Third Avenue, one takes you to Berg Street. In this case, we did meet the trash room size, so this design kind of remained. We're showing trash room here, bike storage here, and electric rooms and the counter rooms, everything self-contained. That's the parking plan. Our first floor plan, as I mentioned, the main entry is here, so here's the stairs. The wheelchair lift that I mentioned is at this location, so you can enter here, your sidewalk here, wheelchair lift, and walk along the platform to the main, total lobby. Living lobby, but lobby in essence is a north-south hallway that is fed, but the apartments are self-avoided, so we've got a goaded corridor with apartments on either side. In this building, we've got six units per floor, with the exception of this first floor, which is a amenity space for the building, we call that a club, the remaining floors two and three, that would be an apartment. So in terms of the breakdown of the Baltic, I'm trying to find it, I've got it here. I'll get it here, instead of going through my notes. So we've got three two-bedroom units, and then 14 two-bedroom units with a den or three-bedroom. Again, I make that distinction because some of the two-bedrooms and a den or three-bedrooms are very similar. It just depends on how the storefront, the entry doors are oriented, and whether or not we have a closet in it. But we're counting in terms of two-bedrooms or three, with a den, the same thing.
Do you have a square footage for the units?
I do, I have a typical layouts that I can give you, which is later on in the set, which I can give you all these typically, they're all rather large size, 1200, 1400, but I can give them more specifically as I get into the plan set. At sheet 29, sheet 30 is our second floor plan, very straightforward circulation, a common hallway runs north-south, connecting two means-of-egress stairs, as well as along that hallway, we've got our main elevator, which gives us ADA compliance, and our storage, refuge storage here, to the chute right there. These are six units that I mentioned, that each of the floors two and three have six units per floor. These grayish blue areas are, as I discussed on Aegean, and the floor below, these are balconies that are recessed four feet, extended up off the face of the facade, two feet, for a total of six feet. So they're just large enough to get a couple chairs in, not large enough to put it down on the table. Now with the thought. 31 is our third floor plan, exactly the same as the floor below. 32 is our roof plan. Again, I'll leave the, to the landscape architect, the conversation about this roof amenity design, but similar to the Aegean, we've located all the building mechanicals far off the building facade, which means, of course, it's even further off the property lines and further from the adjacent buildings. So that's the extent of the floor plans, both the Aegean and the Baltic. I was planning on going into the architecture now, but if you're suggesting we wait for the next meeting, happy to do that.
Can you just let me know, like, you mentioned at the mechanicals, how far off of Berg is that?
And I'm estimating, because I didn't mention which I can for the next meeting, but I'll estimate just based on, so...
I mean, I know in the others, you mentioned 15 feet.
Yeah, it's not the same thing here, so if you look at this dimension here, it's 18, it's about 15 feet off the building line.
Right.
And you've got another five feet from the property line, and so it's 20 feet-ish from the property line. But this dimension is 15 feet. Even further for this section.
You're correct. Do the planning board members have any questions regarding this testimony? Professionals have any questions regarding the testimony that we've done so far?
Nope. Oh, I do.
Okay.
Sorry. How many bicycles can you store in each building?
Pardon me, I have an exhibit which I forgot to bring, but there's more than 20 for each, and I can bring that to the next. I've got a rack already designed, and I can locate within the room, so we'll be able to know for sure. But it's more than 20 for each room.
And each unit does not have any storage on that?
Only within the unit.
Only within the unit, so there's no...
And these are large units, so you'll see when I get to the layouts.
Understood, okay.
So they have enough room for like a kayak and jet ski and...
A wave runner?
Let's call it runners.
Fishing poles.
Do what they like.
Vespas.
That's right. Okay, all right, if our professionals and our board members don't have any questions, let's open up the questions to the public, having to do with anything that was testified regarding the architecture up until now.
Do I need to state my name again?
Yes.
Yes. Jill Mondrone-Gallino, 1004 Berg Street. So I think I saw the renderings accurately, there are six balconies on each building overlooking my house. Is that accurate?
Let's give you the exact number.
Didn't he testify to that this evening?
I testified to the locations. So in this particular building, the Baltic, there are two that are along the, we'll call it the southern facade, which is adjacent to...
Three stories, though. So six.
Six in the Baltic, correct.
Okay, and the Aegean?
Aegean, let me get to those. It would be, so your home is, pardon me, is this circle? No, yeah, sorry, wrong one, yes. I'm going the wrong way, hang on a second.
Six.
So, 22.
It's six.
I got it. I'll answer your question in one second. Okay, so your home's here, you've got two balconies per floor that are facing that direction.
Okay, so six in each building.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. And then, just the, I don't know what they're called, what you just mentioned, the mechanical units on the roof?
The air-conditioned condensing units, which are roof-located, yes.
How would I know how much noise those will make, right? So I can see, I was trying to do the estimates the way that you were, right? You were doing it towards the road, I was doing it towards my house. How do I know whether that's going to be deafening to me?
I mean, well, this is anecdotal, I can tell you that the units that we use in all the buildings these days are relatively quiet. So with that in mind, and in the past, when they weren't so quiet, you would try and move them closer from the property line. What we've done in this case is moved it to the center of the building as much as possible so they still work. So they are, as I mentioned, 20 feet from Berg Street, and we can go through each one if you like, but they're substantially, in terms of distance, so here's your home. Sorry, you can see that, right?
Yes.
So this is the building along Second Avenue, which is the Aegean. So we've got 15 feet here, probably another 10 feet here, then maybe six feet from your home. So they are far away, relatively speaking, and above your house. Your two-story home, so we are...
Three and a half.
Three and a half stories, we'll call it.
Sure, okay. And roughly the same distance in the other building?
Correct.
Frank, is it possible, and I don't know the answer to this, to put up a screen that is soundproof?
They, we, there are manufacturers who make, not soundproof, sound attenuating.
Sound attenuating.
Sound attenuating screens that would, that could cover these, and I think if we're going to do it, it only makes any sense on units that are closer to the lead's house. Otherwise, there's really no impact at all, so...
We'll take a look at that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's something, and we'll talk about it, of course, but at the next meeting I can give you the details.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else that would like to question the architect?
Yes, hello, Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue. Are these units intended to be condominium ownership or rentals?
Condominiums.
Okay, and what's your smallest unit size, square foot?
I didn't testify to that yet. That'll be at the next meeting.
You testified to the types of units?
Correct.
You're going to read...
Your one bedroom is the smallest, not square footage, but it is.
Okay, and later on, you're going to testify as to the applications.
Yes, I couldn't get to those sheets that I got, I was there.
Anyone else, public? No other questions? Okay. Then what I'm going to suggest is that this application gets carried without notice, I just need to get a date from some...
So the next little date is May 16th, how does that work for us?
Is that, do we already have an application?
We have a tentative...
Do we have a tentative application?
...a discussion item, not an applicant.
Not an applicant, just a discussion item?
Correct.
All right, if we only have a discussion item, then, because I envision that this will take...
20 minutes?
I'm a little, yeah, I'm a little hesitant that even that a discussion item might get in the way. If that, unless you'd like to come with that whenever, because a discussion item can't, I mean, we usually give an hour and a half for each applicant. I can't imagine that this discussion item will take long, but you know what? Things happen here. Is it okay? Do you feel...
Yeah, let's put it on.
Put it on? Anyway, okay, May 16th, what was that, 16?
16.
May 16th.
Without notice.
Yes, without notice. All right, can I get a...
Make a motion to carry the May 16th without notice?
There you go.
Can I get a second?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, thank you, Mr. Clayton. All right, I have a motion by Rich Lambert and Second Vice President Clayton. Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Van Alten?
Yes.
James Manano?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Satter?
Yes.
Eric Gallope?
Yes.
Rich Lambert?
Yes.
And finally, Barbara Krida?
Yes.
Thank you, application carried to May 16th, 2022, without further notice.
And I'd like to say something before we adjourn, I'd like to thank the public for coming and being present. We love that. We need your input on all applications, not only this, but on all applications. Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Thank you, Rich Lambert.
Thank you.
James Manano?
Hi.
Thank you, adjourned.